I'd like to call to order today's Thursday, October 11th, meeting of the Missoula County Board of County Commissioners. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get rolling, are there any staff announcements, public announcements? Seeing none. Today, we have three public hearings, which you'll see on your agenda. There should be agendas on the back table if you didn't get one when you came in. Ah, yes, I forgot a very important item. As part of public announcements, we have a proclamation to read. Commissioner Curtis, would you like to read this for us?
Whereas the effects of abuse and violent crimes such as domestic violence, sexual violence, and stalking cross all social and economic lines and affect people of all ages and genders and erode the fabric of our community, and whereas dedicated victim advocates at the Missoula City-County Department of Relationship Violence Services, the Missoula YWCA, the University of Montana Student Advocacy Resource Center, St. Pat's First Step Resource Center, and the Victim Witness Coordinators in the Missoula City Attorney and the Missoula County Attorney Offices provide support, information, and a continuum of care for victims of crime and their families. And whereas in the past year, the YWCA Pathways Program provided services to more than 1,300 survivors of interpersonal violence, the Crime Victim Advocate Program served 1,755 survivors, the Student Advocacy Resource Center provided services to 228 survivors, and First Step served nearly 500 clients. And whereas Missoula community members can get involved by recognizing and supporting the people and programs that provide safety, healing, and help for survivors of relationship violence, by listening, speaking up, and expecting respect, and challenging those who joke about, insult, or try to dehumanize others, and by supporting legislation and pledging never to commit, condone, or remain silent about relationship violence. Now, therefore, we, John Ingham, the Mayor of the City of Missoula, and the Missoula County Board of County Commissioners do hereby jointly proclaim October 15th, 2018, as Victim Advocates Appreciation Day, and urge all citizens to actively participate in the local activities and programs to work toward the elimination of relationship violence.
Thank you. It's okay to clap. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, thanks to all our community advocates. This is critically important work that you accomplished, and your efforts have not gone unnoticed. The City of Missoula, at their city council meeting on, is it October 22nd, will also be reading this proclamation. So, thanks again for our advocates who are here with us today. So, next, we have three public hearings today, and you'll have an opportunity to comment on those when we queue those up. But now is your opportunity, if there's anything not on today's agenda already that you'd like to comment on, feel free to come to the mic. If you come to the mic now or later during one of the public hearings, be sure to hit the button on the microphone base so it turns the light green, and state your name for the record, the public comment on non-agenda items. Okay, and one other reminder just as far as being aware of other folks in the room and in common courtesy, be sure to silence your cellphone, and if you get a chance, sign in on the table in the back of the room if you did not do so as you entered. So, our current claims list is claims received as of September 28, 2018 through October 2, 2018 by the Commissioner's Office totals $935,864.11. So, we have, like I say, three public hearings. I'll open the public hearings on each of these, and we'll begin with staff reports, and that will be followed by public comment, and then the Commissioners will go into their period of discussion and questions and deliberation. So, to begin with, I'd like to open a public hearing on a proposed Mullen Road sewer main extension, and we'll begin with a staff report from Chief Public Works Officer Greg Roberson.
You've got to turn on your green light.
Oh, thank you. Sorry about that. Before you are two hearings, completely unrelated, but similar in their nature. To give you some context, and we haven't had one of these in quite some time, but back in the early to mid 2000s, there was a rash of annexations that were done by the City of Missoula into the county. And it was also at the time when we were working on sewer-ing the Mullen Road corridor and just finishing completion. And at the time, county residents felt like they didn't have a voice with the matter of city annexation with sewer main extensions, which was the typical tool used for annexation. So, the Commissioners at the time adopted a resolution that, and it was based on a county attorney's opinion, that it's purely discretionary on the part of a county commissioners to decide whether to allow a water or sewer main within a county road right-of-way. That opinion, as far as I know, has not changed. The resolution was retired and codified in our Public Works Manual, so that's what the basis is. So, any extension of a water main or sewer main within a county road right-of-way requires a public hearing on the matter. So, before you are two such requests. The first one is by Dan Chilcote. His address is 4900 Mullen Road, and he is represented by PCI. And the second is Tolleson Properties at the Ram Edition off of Maestad Court, near Snapdragon, out in the running W Ranch area. As far as I know, both applicants' reps are here. These hearings have been duly advertised in the Missoulian, and I have affidavits of publication to validate that. So, that is the purpose of the hearing today, to take public input and make a decision on whether to grant the extensions.
Okay, thanks, Greg. And maybe it makes sense to open up the public hearing on both of them simultaneously. So, at this time, would either the applicants or applicants' representatives like to say anything regarding these two proposals? If so, come on up. Don't be shy. Tell us why it's a good idea. If you could, yeah, hit the button. It should turn green. Perfect.
Yes, hello. My name's Jeff Standard, and I'm with PCI, and I am representing Dan Chilcote for the Mullen Road Trailer Court Sewer Main Extension. So, I guess let me start, give you a little background on where this came from. So, this is out past Walmart a little ways. It's a, there's nine trailers on the lot. The lot's very small. It's only a .7 of an acre big, and they currently have two non-functioning septic systems on the lot. They've had numerous letters from the Health Department in the recent years, and they're fully aware of the issues. They actually have a cesspool is one of the systems, and the other one is a failed septic system. So, it's a bit of a sanitary issue going on right now, and the only, you know, the best solution really here that we came up with, instead of, you know, putting another system out there that could potentially fail, and really, there's no room to put a system there, was to connect to the city sewer, which runs right in front of the deal there. So, yeah, I don't know if you guys saw the plans or anything like that. We're looking at 120 lineal feet of eight-inch PVC gravity sewer, and nine connections there. And I believe where this is coming into county right-of-way is the access for Old Mullen Road. It's a very pretty small piece that we would be coming through. I believe it's about 15 or 20 feet there, depending on where exactly that line is at. But, you know, we've gone through all the process of gaining all the approvals. We've gotten through DEQ, went through DEQ, and the City of Missoula got an encroachment permit from MDT, and it actually was news to me that there was 15 feet of county right-of-way in there. So, I apologize about missing that, but I believe Greg brought it to our attention. So, that's basically what we're asking for to go through there, so.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Standards, I believe that the Health Department regulations also require that because sewer is that close that you need to connect rather than replace the system.
That is correct, too, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Is our other applicant rep here and would like to speak to this? Or to a separate proposal, I guess. This would be the Mastad Court.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Jeff Smith with WGM Group. I here representing Tolleson Properties. So, the main extension on Mastad Court across Snapdragon is a water main extension that will serve a project that Tolleson Properties is completing on Lot 4 of the Ram Edition. It's a series of duplexes. The main that we're extending to that property will also serve lots 1 and 2 of the Ram Edition, which are further to the north. Two sewer main extensions included as well here. Both of those sewer main extensions would be directly for service to the duplexes that are proposed. The water main extends across Mastad and then is located within an easement on private property, sorry, across Snapdragon. Once it's across Snapdragon, it's on private property. So, I think we're looking at 80 feet of water main that are located within county right-of-way, and then it's on private property from there. The sewer main extensions extend from an existing main in Mastad onto private property, so I think there's, I think there are 15 feet of sewer main on each extension that would be included in this request.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Thanks. So, this is a public hearing. Is there any public comment on either of these proposed sewer main extensions? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any questions or a motion from the Commission?
I would move to approve the extension of the sewer main for the Mullen Road project and for the Mastad Court project. It seems like these are both dealing with public health issues and taking care of wastewater, and the public isn't here to say not to do it. So, I would vote say move in favor.
Second.
Any further discussion? Greg, did we receive any comment, negative comment? Okay, thanks. So, we have a motion. It's been seconded and had discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our third public hearing for the day, which I will open, is on a proposed New Meadows Park master plan. We will begin with kind of a multi-pronged staff report that will include Martha Yates, Chair of the Parks and Trails Advisory Board, and then John Stegmeier and Garrick Swanson from our Parks and Trails program. So, Martha, come on up.
Well, hi, and thanks for the introduction, Dave. I'm Martha Yates. I'm with the Missoula County Parks and Trails Advisory Board Chair. And I would like to, I'm going to read this because I don't conduct meetings quite as well as Dave and as our staff does. So, I'd like to thank the County Commissioners for the opportunity to elaborate on the Parks and Trail Advisory Board's position on the New Meadows Plan and the process we, as an advisory board, have gone through. Ten to 15 years ago, about the only opportunity we had to work on any of our 91 parks was through a matching grants process and having community members come to us with good ideas that they had for their neighborhood. The money would go to the best ideas that sounded good and even sounded great at the time. We were a reactive board due to money and staff constraints, not a proactive board. We've gone through a huge learning process during the past 10 years through the development of our Master Parks and Trails Plan that was finalized in 2012. With the plan in place, our hope has been to take advantage of outside funding and partnership opportunities. That has been possible through planning and having something tangible that we, as a board and staff, can present and use to support, to obtain that funding. Without a plan, we cannot be methodical in our approach to develop this park or other parks, to take full advantage of resources and partnerships that may come available from time to time. New Meadows Park has been on our board's radar well before our plan was developed, but staff and resources were very limited. Now, with community support and request, we can begin the planning process. Through Garrick's diligent and dogged approach to getting public participation and input, we have developed a plan that can be implemented in parts as funding and other opportunities and partnerships arise. One of our young participants that came to our first meeting that we had at Hellgate Elementary had a lot of questions about what we could do with, put in the park, and I think he would have liked to have had that park developed the next day. When our 2012 Master Parks and Trails Plan was written, New Meadows had a swing set, a small basketball court, play equipment, and a bike BMX trail that were all in poor conditions. Of course, kids will create bike trails wherever they can with whatever they can find. Our plan recommended that the New Meadows be upgraded to a community park, improve existing amenities, and add picnic tables, a multipurpose field, and possible bike BMX track, and a loop trail. So, the ideas and plans for this park are not new, but getting around to it's been a different story. But with the encouragement from local residents and having more staff to help us take better care of our 91 parks, we can begin to implement some of the 2012 plan. New Meadows was in the plan to act on as a capital priority within the first one-to-three-year timeframe, an ambitious goal, but nonetheless a goal. We are plugging away at our 2012 plan, accomplishing priorities such as the Fort Missoula Regional Park and developing and finishing trails, especially the low-low to Missoula leg of the Bitterroot Trail, one through a bond and the trail through a grant. None of this would have been done without a plan in place that could be used as support for our request. Now, we are trying to take care of our neighborhood and community parks by developing plans. The Advisory Board hopes you will support our effort by accepting this plan. And thanks for all you guys do to help us as we grow and become better stewards of our public lands to support healthy recreation to all. And then I have three letters of support from people that haven't been able to be here that, if I could...
Sure, just give them Emmy right here.
It's one from Bill and Linda Johnson that are on New Meadows Drive, Bob Scugley on Peregrine Court, and Nancy Riddle on Nut Houtch Drive.
Okay, thanks, Martha.
Good afternoon, Missoula Board of County Commissioners. Ladies and gentlemen, if I may share a little bit of the story of the recent process of where we are today with this plan. It's a little over three years ago, a park neighbor named John Jordanis paid a visit to the county park board. When John came, he requested that the county address some issues at the park, including deferred maintenance of existing play equipment and illegal dumping, among other things. As an aside, since Mr. Jordanis's visit to the park board, Missoula County Parks, Trails, and Open Lands has secured the park entrance off Mullen Road to prevent unauthorized vehicle access, removed encroachments that included dumping debris and storage of personal property in the park, mowed the park annually for the past two years, sprayed the park for noxious weeds, installed two park rule signs, partnered with neighbors to organize a park cleanup event to remove hazards and failing play equipment as recently as this last spring. But back to the story. Beyond addressing these immediate maintenance issues, Mr. Jordanis also proposed the county consider a long-term plan for New Meadows Park, which he described, and I quote, "A vision or design and a partnership to protect and enhance the park's rural open space and recreation opportunities," end of quote. The Parks and Trails Board heard Mr. Jordanis's request and reviewed it against the 2012 County Parks and Trails Master Plan. And as Martha just indicated, the plan really means a lot to our program and to the board, and they strive in most everything they do to fulfill the plan. The board's focus on this plan and the encouragement from a park neighbor was the basis for the board recommending that staff undertake a master planning process. The value of the Park Master Plan and the narrative description is that it's the initial step in developing a park. The plan provides an invaluable reference for current and future community members to understand how specific development considerations were made, along with a visual illustration for the end goal. If adopted, the master plan would guide park development as well as inform planning for ongoing maintenance needs. The time the community has invested to attend planning workshops since 2015, provide common and ultimately come-to consensus on the plan presented to you today, has resulted in a truly community-driven master plan for New Meadows Park. On behalf of Missoula County Parks, Trails, and Open Lands Program, at this time, I'd like to extend a huge thank you to Mr. Jordanis, who is not here today, I believe, out of the country, and everyone else who participated in the process over the past three years. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, John. Garrick?
All right. For the record, my name is Garrick Swanson with the Missoula County Parks, Trails, and Open Lands Program. This public hearing was posted in the Missoulian two consecutive Sundays prior to the hearing, as well as communicated with the neighborhood of New Meadows Park. Thank you, John. Thank you, Martha, for introducing the master plan process for New Meadows Park. It has been touched on. What is a master plan? A master plan is a long-term vision intended to be used as a guiding document to help meet park and recreational interests and goals of a community as they change, grow, and new trends emerge. The proposed New Meadows Master Plan is designed to be implemented in phases and does not need to be implemented all at once. New Meadows Park is located on Mullen Road just west of the cemetery, just west of the cemetery, as outlined in purple. To the south, we have three other county-owned parcels, Golden West Park, and also Council Hill Park, which are both undeveloped parks. The utility parcel is a county-owned parcel, but it is not considered a park in there. And then to the east, we have 44 Ranch, which is a city park. As the crow flies, it is .4 miles from New Meadows Park. It is 2.3 ground miles from New Meadows Park. So, leaving that neighborhood and around New Meadows Park, not underserved for parks, but it does not have adequate park facilities to meet their park and recreational needs, as New Meadows, Golden West, and Council Hill Park are all undeveloped park or are in severe need of maintenance and attention. And then there's Hellgate Elementary School, and then even further to the west is Pleasant View, which is a city park as well. Within New Meadows Park, we have three legal entrances. We have two to the south, directly connecting into the New Meadows Park neighborhood, and a MDT-recognized approach off of Mullen Road. To the east of the park is the cemetery parcel, as well as the parcel to the north is also owned by the cemetery with private property on the south and on the west of New Meadows Park. And then, New Meadows Park also connects to the existing Mullen Road shared-use path, providing neighborhood connectivity. New Meadows Park was acquired in about 1980 through the subdivision process. Then, at that time, there was also park improvements done, which included a playground, basketball court, and a perimeter bike path, which also serves as a bike skills track for youth. So, these are some existing site conditions photos. These hazards were removed during the park cleanup event this year. The basketball and the swings are still there. We did clean up around them, removed weeds, and then raked the kick zones back in underneath the swings. So, why a park master plan for New Meadows Park? Without having a master plan, it is difficult to secure potential funds from grants, to be able to plan for maintenance, capital, and improvement projects. With the adoption of the New Meadows Master Plan, it will provide additional opportunities for partnerships in park development. Once we get started, I've seen parks gain approval, and then people come out and say, "Well, I have a tractor, so I could come help level the park." "Well, I own a sod company, so I could come donate 5,000 square feet of turf." And it all comes together, and pretty soon we have this project where we saved a significant amount of money through that. Adoption of the master plan will also strengthen the county's ability to secure grants and funding. It does provide a vision and management for New Meadows Park, and that also provides a point of reference when we have park neighbors or other interested nonprofit organizations come in and ask how they could help support or improve New Meadows Park. It also encourages a healthy lifestyle and a social well-being that promotes a high quality of life within Missoula County. It ensures protection of the park for both active and passive recreation. And then, the master plan process is a combination of a collaborative and open public process of a community's vision. Why did we choose to focus in on New Meadows Park? Both John and Martha highlighted quite a bit of this. We had our park neighbor in September 2015 come forward. Our 2012 master plan highlights that it needs maintenance on play equipment swings and the basketball court. It's been recommended to be reclassified from a neighborhood park to a community park, and the master planning process helps ensure that we incorporate those elements that create a community park. Doesn't mean that we have to implement all those site amenities now, but it secures that they will fit and work as a comprehensive system. The 2004 City-County Master Park and Recreation Plan for the greater Missoula area identified the need for a community park within this area. This park is connected to surrounding communities via the Mullen Road shared-use path. And then, once again, the adopted master plan just increases our chance to be able to secure funding and to plan. to secure funding and to plan. The New Meadows Master Plan has been a comprehensive and extensive public process over the past two and a half years, kicking off in 2015, when the park board was approached with concerns of park condition and safety. We mailed out 500 postcards within a half-mile of New Meadows Park. And then in February was our first meeting, and then from February to June is when we collected public comment and went through a series of master plan revisions. Then in August of 2018 of this year, the Parks and Trails Advisory Board recommended the master plan to the Board of County Commissioners for adoption, and here we are today at the public hearing. Back in February, when we first kicked this off, some basic assumptions brought to the planning process by the county said they needed to be economically feasible, the park is open to the public. We would use crime prevention through environmental design principles in our planning process. Crime prevention through environmental design is a multidisciplinary approach to determining criminal behavior that focuses on changing how places are laid out and how they look and feel. Criminologists C. Ray Jeffries coined the term in the 1970s, around the same time the architect Oscar Newman's ideas about defensible space took hold. Fundamentally, crime prevention through environmental design suggests that you can change how people act in a place by altering its design. Through park management and design, I have realized how well we design, maintain, and enforce has a significant impact on people's perception of crime and actual crime. It is difficult to prove that the past designs informed by SEPTED principles prevented crime, but when crime and undesirable behavior is addressed, it is commonly noted what was not designed well, maintained, or enforced. So through the adoption of the master plan, we can continue to work toward physical changes in the park to help reduce crime and unwanted behavior. And then it was a top priority that the master plan respects park neighbors. Residents of the area provides both active and passive recreation opportunities and addresses park encroachments. This is a list of the guiding principles that came out of that February workshop that were identified by the community, and they've been carried forward through the master planning process. These are the top, these are the interest and values ranked through that process, with the top three highlighted in blue. I have commonly referred to low-impact development, walking loop trail, playground, dog park, passive recreation shade shelter and buffer zone as the top five, considering that passive recreation shade shelter and buffer zone all had 11 votes. During that process, these are a few of the drawings done by the community that also calls out the site amenities and programming that they put into their drawings. I have taken all this information and put it into a series of master plans that received public comment. This was the first attempt back in September of 2017. The primary comment regarding this design is that it was too close to the cemetery to the east. Through the process, I learned that we have veteran plots on that side of the cemetery and also infant plots. We needed to move everything in the park to the west. So that was this master plan that was presented in April, April 18, 2018, where you can see where we moved all those site amenities away from the park. The closest we are to the park is 203 feet. And then there was public comment to have a formalized dog park here. And you can see that we've incorporated the elements that were mentioned. We have the bike skills track. We have a turf area, a traditional playground with shade shelter, and then the basketball area here. And at full, we'll get to there. And then, so then I revised this one more time, based on the previous comment from the community. It felt too developed for the area. So we were able to take a step back and reduce the scale, and this master plan really focuses on improving existing park features that are already there. Our playground, the half-size basketball court, a walking trail system, and a connection to the Mullen Road Shared Use Trail. Possible new features in this plan are the shade shelter and the multi-use turf area. The other elements faded back with the purple text. Those are future items that were not supported by the community when they approved this master plan in June of this year. But it's important to show how those elements could, should they be needed, so it's a comprehensive park and system that works together. And this is what it looks like without the additional site amenities faded back. So in summary of public comments, park safety was always a concern through all of our public meetings, and then always using our SEPTED guiding principles. It was brought to my attention at the first meeting that the current well on-site is not adequate to provide water to the neighborhood. The neighborhood experiences low water pressure at peak use times. As an alternative, if that well doesn't work out, we would need to drill a new 35-gallon-per-minute well, or we need to reduce back and use zero escape principles. There was comment on the Clark Fork River Grass Valley Important Bird Area. Reached out to both the Montana Audubon Society and IBA consultant Jim Brown for their comment. In brief, there would not be significant impact to the Clark Fork Grass Valley Important Bird Area, particularly the species of concern. There was a comment for us to open up all public park access points, preserve generous screening setbacks to the neighboring property, which we have done to both the cemetery and to the residents. We've made a phased approach. I did explore an alternative vehicle park access that was not supported by the adjacent property owners. There's a dog park in there now at the request of the neighborhood, should that be needed. We've lowered the level of development lighting. If it is warranted, it would be a solar motion-activated light in our high-use areas. And then the current approach to the park, as noted by the Montana Department of Transportation, would also be brought up to standards, should the park come into full development. Then there was concern about the 45 mile an hour speed limit on Mullen Road adjacent to the park, and they would need to work with the Montana Department of Transportation to get that changed. So in an outreach and response summary throughout the project, we reached out to over 500 households twice within a half-mile radius of New Meadows Park. Throughout the process, I developed 51 contacts with area residents that I have brought, that I've updated throughout the public process. Throughout this process, we've received 14 comments from households in support, and we've received comments from three households in opposition. There's also been an area resident neighborhood petition started in opposition of the master plan. This is just a brief image of the support that this park received during the New Meadows Park Cleanup Day, that we supported, resulted in a total of approximately 56 volunteer hours on a Saturday morning. Cost to develop a park vary widely on the construction type and the type of facilities, but it is an opportunity for grant funding, volunteer, and future partnerships. Some other funding sources not mentioned would be the County Parks and Trails Matching Grant Program and others that we commonly reference. The Federal Land and Water Conservation Funds, the State Park Recreational Trails Program, and there are other grant opportunities out there. So in next steps, the Parks, Trails, and Open Lands recommends that the Board of County Commissioners adopt the New Meadows Park Master Plan and narrative. Pending adoption, we'd be able to work toward project funding and ongoing management operations, work towards funding advancement of the current concept plan to design development, and then ultimately leading towards a construction document with phased engineering cost. And then we would be looking in terms of priority for hopeful development would be trails, a turf and a playground, and then the half-size basketball court. And if we had funding, it'd be, you know, we could do all of them, but that is not And then that concludes my presentation.
Okay. Thanks, Garrick. So this is a public hearing. If there's anyone out there who would like to comment on the proposed New Meadows Park Master Plan, come on up to the microphone. Like I say, hit that button to turn the light green and state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Pootie McLaughlin. I'm here on behalf of Five Alley's Audubon. Specifically, we support this master plan, and I wanted to read comments from Jim Brown, also a member of Five Alley's Audubon, regarding the Important Bird Area specifically. Jim has written, "On behalf of Five Alley's Audubon, I would like to confirm my earlier comments about impacts of the New Meadows Park development on bird habitat in the Clark Fork River Grass Valley Important Bird Area, or IBA. We support the proposed master plan. It both provides recreational opportunities and some native grassland that might support a small amount of bird use, including vespers, sparrows, and some foraging by raptors when people disturbance is not occurring. The IBA was established to encourage conservation of the wetlands, riparian areas, and associated grasslands found in the greater Missoula Valley. The boundaries of the IBA are defined by the Clark Fork River on the southwest side and by a combination of cover type, terrain features, and roads on the northeast side. Within those boundaries, some areas are absolutely critical for maintaining habitat that supports a diversity of species, including several species of conservation concern. Other areas within the IBA are not as critically important for birds due to limitations of the habitat itself and existing development that discourages birds from using the area due to that disturbance. Some grassland bird species are only attracted to extensive areas of grass. Thus, once grasslands are fragmented into small areas by development, bird diversity is reduced, especially for species of conservation concern. Bird activity in the proposed New Meadows Park is limited, to some extent, by these factors. Bird use and bird diversity in the New Meadows Park could be increased by establishing one or more patches of native shrubs, particularly in the more moist swale. We appreciate your concern about impacts of the proposed park on birds and other wildlife in the IBA and your efforts to minimize those impacts. Thank you." I would also add that I live in the New Meadows Park area, and I support the park, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional comment. Come on up to the mic.
Hi, my name is Steve Martin. I live in New Meadows, and I was just going to say that that trail that runs west, that's on, the park would be on the west end of that trail, which then not only would open that park up for just our neighborhood, but all the people along that Mullen Road there. So it just gives access to a lot more people to a nice little park if they could develop that up.
And you think that's a good thing?
Well, as much as I wasn't excited about having the entrance run right alongside my house, I'm willing to bite the bullet to have a nice park there for people to use.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
You bet. Additional comment. Come on up.
Thank you for having this hearing today. My name's Jennifer Martin. I'm Steve Martin's wife, and I just have a letter that I have signed from several of my neighbors that I'd like to read and submit to you all. It says, "Dear Missoula County Commissioners, neighbors of New Meadows Park wish to express support and advocacy for the New Meadows Park Master Plan. The plan proposes maintaining New Meadows Park as a natural park with native desirable vegetation and policy to address noxious weeds. For several years, the park has not been maintained. Neighbors have attempted to maintain what they can. We appreciate the recent work and support that the Missoula County Parks, Trails, and Open Lands Program have provided, including open meetings, informational signs, a gate, mowing to reduce fire fuel, and spraying for noxious weeds. Our park is an important asset to our neighborhood. Neighbors of New Meadows Park fully support the proposed master plan to improve the park, which includes no increases in taxes. Sincerely, New Meadows Park's neighbors."
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Just want to hand it to Emmy right here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jeannie Frank, and I'm a New Meadows resident, and I just wanted to present some ideas from a personal outlook. First off, the process that we went through on this program was phenomenal. Everybody's ideas were considered and discussed and essentially distilled down to the very essence, and it was really a good process to watch. Garrick did an absolutely wonderful job. Thank you. The Cleanup Day was also another very good instance of community cooperation, and kids were out there cleaning, and adults, and it was just a good process to watch everybody coming together, and it gives us a sense of ownership of that park, and that's so important. The second part is as a frequent user of this area. In the summer, I am in that park, walking around the trail approximately three times a week. It's part of my walking route, and you really get to know an area. In fact, I found a bunch of apples dumped in it last week or so, and I actually was personally insulted because this was my park. I'm not the only one who uses it. There are a lot of kids that use it on the bikes. The swing sets, nah, not so much, because they're kind of old and decrepit. But the kids that bike on it will build jumps and stuff, and they do use it. My feeling about this is, as it becomes more attractive, we're going to get more users. And in the wintertime, it's even used. I will go out there and use it to cross-country. It's just a nice little area to get a quick workout, and there's other people that have gone on snowshoes. The dogs, of course, are out, too. And I think by improving this area, it can only improve the entire feel of the neighborhood and give us ownership in a worthwhile project. Okay? Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Additional public comment. Come on up. Anybody? Oh, yes, come on. You're good to go. Yep, the light's already green for you. You're good to go.
I'm Mary Rector, and we've lived out there now for about
I'm Mary Rector, and we've lived out there now for about thirty years. I also want to say thanks for the process because I think, you know, it's been, I think it scared me initially when I first heard about the project because it seemed like it was just too much development for an area that really was undeveloped. We have two daughters who were some of those ones who created their own paths and used it quite a bit, and safety was always a concern, and luckily, you know, they, they survived, and we survived it, too. I guess, you know, my ideas on this have evolved in the sense that I'm still kind of unclear as to the funding piece. I know that there are people who are willing to help and, but only to a degree, and I guess my big concern, like for our water in the summertime, that's an issue that I know Garrick addressed, but what will happen if we don't get the pump and, and water's used there, will that impact us in terms of the neighborhood? And, and certain things like that. I guess I, too, agree that I would like to see it, you know, it was kind of in a really sad shape for a while, and now with, with it being somewhat maintained, it's been so much better. But I definitely want to speak to the fact that I would like it to stay as undeveloped as possible. Trails are great, maybe maintaining some of the playground equipment, but to just keep it as natural and as, you know, I guess, natural as, as it has been. A lot of us do use it, and just to be able to ski out there in the, in the wintertime as well as to use it now as a walking trail and to connect to that other walking trail that's out there is great, but I, my one concern is like when we talked about parking and bathroom and shelters, I really don't like the idea of that so much, and I guess I just wanted to make that clear, that there are still some of us who are very much on board and are willing to participate, but just don't want to see it really overdeveloped. That's about it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Rector. Additional public comment? Come on up.
Good afternoon. My name is Bruce Scottwig, and I'm a reasonably new member of the community in the New Meadows area. We moved there over about two and a half years ago, and I want to go on record, first of all, to say that I do support green area very strongly. I mean, I helped in Great Falls stop the building of houses in a park area that the, the city was considering. And so, in my opinion, the, the idea of green area is important because you, you can take it away, but you can never get it back. And so, I do support the idea of, of keeping that area as a park, park area. On, on my side of this thing, I've, I've got somewhat of a selfish way to look at it and some that's not so, but the selfish side of this is, at some point, there's gonna have to be something paid, we will have to pay something for it. I mean, there, we can build it, and you can get grants and, and put it together like that, but at some point, maintenance and, and due maintenance needs to be paid for in some manner, and that's, that's not gonna just appear. And so, it's gonna have to come through taxes in some manner, and I'm not supporting that, that aspect of it at all. I mean, from the time we moved into our house in New Meadows, from the following year, our taxes went up two hundred dollars a month, and that is very, very significant for us because we are on a fixed income. My wife and I are both retired, and that was a huge jump for us, and we can't, I'm not sure we can deal with another jump in taxes that, that's significant. And so, I would be against that, the, you know, the green area perfectly good, the building of the park, I always worry about funding is gonna have to come from somewhere, and, and I don't want it to be in my taxes. The other side of that, too, is, and I've mentioned this in meetings we've had before, is the water. And knowing that, you know, as Garrett said, he said that if, if a need be, we can build wells. Well, you know, the idea isn't to build a park and then start draining what we have because I can tell you right now that our water needs are, we're, we're already on the limit of that. And so, if adding a new watering system to that park is gonna really, really, it's gonna hurt the, our, our watering ability. We, we, we can only water once every other day, and so, this is gonna even make that more difficult for us because, you know, well water, you're at the mercy of the well, and so, there is an unlimited amount of water in that. So I, I'm concerned about that end of it as well. I always, I've been thinking of the fact that I hear all the time that the county and the city are always really strapped for money, and I just can't even imagine having to build a, a well and then to, to find ways to afford this, this park. Do I support the, yeah, the park is fine. I like it there. I walk through there when I, when I do my loops as well. But practically speaking, I'm just a little concerned about that. I, I also think about the parking situation because I'm, we're right along one of those walkway areas, and people are gonna pull and park someplace so that they can get access to the park and walk through there, which, being in an area where the people, they've gotta park someplace, if they come and gain access to it, I just don't want to see our streets clogged up with, with cars, and our, our streets are pretty narrow the way that they are now. And so, I, I can, I'm concerned about that side of it as well. The walkway alongside my house, I'm not crazy about that at all. I wish it wasn't there, being that it's there, I can deal with that, but knowing that, that there's, the other walkway is not that far from our walkway, the one that's already been somewhat opened up. I, I'm not sure we need that many walkways to get people into the park. They can get into the park with one rather than two walkways as well. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Varan Chapman. I'm a resident on New Meadows Drive, and I do not support this plan. I have a online petition that I created, and then I also have over fifty signatures stating that we want Missoula County to maintain the area where New Meadows Park exists and keep it as an open field where the existing ecosystem can thrive. And I have those signatures for you. My conversation with Jim Brown was him encouraging me to, this is the man from IBA, to ask you all to not use chemicals on the area. That would keep that, birds thriving and the existing ecosystem also in check. I think this area should be considered for the open space bond. There's ninety-one parks. I had no idea there was that many. It's a lot of parks. If you guys decided that you wanted to create a new park, I'm curious why you didn't do it on the Council Hill area because there is, it's a corner, and the speed limit's right around twenty-five, thirty miles an hour. It's point seven miles from New Meadows Park, so it's very close. And it is, I have pictures for you guys that I'll give you with the signatures. All along that side, there is parking. Like if you were to look at Bonner Park, if you took away the parking against the park, everybody would be parking on the residential part. So this offers that opportunity to have parking. I'm curious why the park got so bad that a community member had to ask for it to be cleaned up. Why didn't the county address it? I think that should be a county job to go out and look at their parks and find out what needs to be tended to. No one monitors this area. The neighbors do. If there's a problem, we have to call the county. The county will hopefully address it. Elmar has a ton of parks. It's so easy to walk over there if they want to go to an existing park. I'm curious, Garrick, if you consider the New Meadows Park maintained now?
Please address your comments to the chair, and we'll have an opportunity to come back to that.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I, I was, I don't know if it, the park is considered maintained now or not, but I would also present you with a picture of how it looks, and then you can just look at that. The bike skills part of this phase, according to what the neighborhood and that first meeting wanted, that was at the end of what people wanted. The first top, as you guys know, forty-three people wanted low impact, and then the walking loop, and then the, the playground. So, in my opinion, you should, those top three or top five should be looked at, not pulled from the bottom of the list to add things. I'm a dog lover. I operate a business that works with dogs, and I don't want that dog park there. There's horses that are right there. I think it'll be people coming there, letting their dogs go in. It's gonna be too small. They poop, they don't pick it up. It's just gonna be a big field of dog feces that will not be maintained. So, yeah, I, I just don't support this, and I think there's a great spot if you guys want to create funding for another park that's point seven miles away, that's already on your guys' radar as far as an area that is the county's. And so, I will give you guys the signatures, the condition of the park the way it is now, and the proposed plan of another location.
Okay. Thank you. That's okay. Any additional comment? Oh, we got a couple springing to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Sue Brown. I'm a county resident, and I'm speaking as a county resident. In order for you to understand where I'm coming from and my support for this New Meadows Plan, I need to explain my enthusiasm for parks since I moved to Missoula. As a parent of young children, long time ago, I took advantage of the parks available, mostly Bonner Park. Bonner Park has been and is a much-used and valuable community asset. Through that love of parks, I became one of the founding activists for Pine View Park in the Rattlesnake. At that time, it was a field of rocks. Through neighborhood participation, physically picking rocks, raising money through lunch sales, planting trees with the Rattlesnake School classes, digging wild trees and purchasing trees, and getting a government grant, from doing all of this, it became an amazing community asset without any help from the county. So since then, I've been so fortunate to become a member of the Missoula County Park Board, and I've had the pleasure of overseeing county parks for twenty years. For a long time, I felt that a community park is needed in the Mullen Road area. I do not believe that families should have to drive long distances to use a public park. When Missoula County Park Plan was developed, it stressed the importance of public parks to the quality of life in a community. At that time, the park board had few resources and staff and in funding, and we were unable to do many things, in very few things. The plan urged the board to be more proactive in helping communities develop parks, and we also since then have gained staff and county funding from the county commissioners to assist us to become better park stewards. On page sixty-three of our park plan, it is recommended that we develop this eight-point-eight acre New Meadows Park into a community park that serves a larger area than just adjacent several blocks, and a community park with the amenities similar to Bonner Park and/or Pine View Park. Thus, when a neighborhood citizen came to the park board asking for help with New Meadows, we had a plan that urged us and a staff capable of creating a blueprint for a park. I want to stress that this is a blueprint for future neighborhood action when funds and neighborhoods and, and neighbors feel it is important to them to have a place to gather. During this well-done planning process by the staff, many citizens expressed enthusiasm for a developed park and participated in a workday. I still hope that the county will be able, in the future, to assist these citizens in the future by using the framework of this plan to achieve a community park for all. Please approve this plan.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Brown. Come on up.
Good afternoon, and thanks for having this meeting. My name is Bill Stavers. I live near the park on Grassland Drive. I've been involved with the dog businesses for thirty years, and before I moved here five years ago, I worked in Los Angeles, and there was a big push down there at four, five, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, to have dog parks. What I would like to address is that you really think hard and long about putting a dog park in this area. What happened, though, in Los Angeles is probably bound to happen here. People will come from far away, well, well, it's far away, but they will come and they will use the dog park. Dog parks, dogs in a park like this will destroy the vegetation. You have lots of poop, lots of cleanup, and lots of what I would call blase owners. In addition to which, there's a, really a big business for having one person come and take several dogs out for dog play, dog trail, dog walking, and they will come and use this park to let the dogs walk and run around. So soon, what happens is you have gangs of dogs, eight dogs, ten dogs, five dogs being delivered to the park. They sit there all day, and then they take them home at the end of the day or at the end of three or four hours, and it really degrades the whole atmosphere of the park. So just based upon my experience of seeing this happen from beginning to end, I really urge you to think hard and long about whether you want, you want a bunch of dogs. I don't mean to say that in a derogatory way, but you want these dogs coming in day after day to this place in this area. Thanks.
Thank you. So it looks like, is there anyone else? Oh, yes, come on up.
My name is Jay Rector. I live in the New Meadows subdivision. I've been there about thirty years. The last two years, they've act, we've actually had some maintenance in the park other than the neighborhoods or the people that are adjacent to the neighborhood. My biggest concern is, one, number one is water. Number two is parking, 'cause not everybody is gonna walk to this park. If you have people within a half-mile radius of this park gonna use it, I suspect, suspect that other people will be using it as well. They can't park on Mullen Road 'cause they don't have any parking available off of Mullen Road. I'm pretty sure the cemetery doesn't want them parking in the cemetery loops. They can't park on Mul, on Cody Lane because there's no shoulder to park on, so that only leaves one area, the New Meadows subdivision. And I don't, I don't really think that they'll, that this park will be very utilized in the short-term timeframe, but as the growth of population moves west in Missoula, this is the only park out there right now. The next, the next, the third thing on my agenda is the long-term funding. We can get it built with park funds, with grants, things like this. Who's gonna pay for the maintenance long-term? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rector. I think everyone's had a chance to comment. Is there anyone else? Anyone who I'm, I'm missing out there who has not had a chance to comment? Okay, see none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Are there questions from the commission?
Garrick, I thought we saw a comment regarding the water from Greg Robertson? Did we see something earlier saying that there was adequate water? Is this park currently served by a well, or is it hooked to one of the water systems out there?
This park is currently not served with any water.
No water, okay.
The current well in the southeast corners is part of a series of wells that serves the New Meadows neighborhood, the Elmar Estates and some adjacent neighborhoods. If I'm the New Meadows neighborhood, the Elmar Estates and some adjacent neighborhoods, if I'm correct.
Okay. So I just wanted folks to know that, um, that the water in the area is on the county's radar because we've talked with our, um, Public Works Director and it seems like the, some of the old pipes, I mean, we need to start looking at, at replacing and, um, upsizing some of the pipes. So that is on the, on the radar to, um, make those improvements in the future with TSEP grants and different things like that. So I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Uh, Derek, I just, just a couple of questions here. So could you speak to, we heard some, um, some concern that maybe the Council Hills Park might be, um, desirable for development over and above, uh, this one? What, how is that park classified? Um, is that a neighborhood park? Uh, I'm assuming it's not a community park, but could you speak to that at all?
Yes, uh, Council Hill Park is classified as a conservation park and it has, um, it has slope conditions that are in excess of, of five percent, which are not suitable for building parks on. Um, building parks on slopes substantially increases cost, substantially increases cost for maintenance and, um, limits the, um, use for any, um, site programming.
So in other words, some of the site programming that was identified for the New Meadows Park would not be able to be implemented at Council Hill. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, second question I heard posed was, uh, relative to the, I guess, the current level of maintenance at New Meadows, um, whether it's considered a maintained park or not. Um, I guess, how would you characterize the current level of maintenance at New Meadows?
Uh, I would agree over, over the past several years, maintenance at New Meadows Park has been less than acceptable due to limited resources through the County Parks and Trails Program. Um, over the past, uh, uh, two years since we started this, um, this process, we have really tried to focus on the, um, low hanging fruit and the immediate needs that we could, provide the, provide the park. Uh, throughout this, uh, planning process and with the, and with the narrative, it is stated that, um, that, um, a park development would only be done in accordance with the county's ability to confirm long-term, um, operations and maintenance cost.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I think that's prudent. Uh, if we're going to build something, we better have a plan to maintain it. Uh, I think there's too many examples where, not necessarily speaking to Missoula County, where you've seen things built, but no provision for them being maintained or hidden costs cropping up after the fact. Um, another question, Garrick, there was some mention as far as chemical usage in the park. Uh, how do you see that playing out, uh, and as that relates to, say, bird habitat?
I, I would just like to back up just one step and add a additional comment
Sure.
to the maintenance. So when this park was acquired in nineteen eighty, it's acquired as parkland with part of the New Meadows subdivision, and then we had these park improvements put in that have now exceeded their, that have now exceeded their life. But when we acquired the park and those park improvements, there was also no additional funding identified to address ongoing operations and maintenance, which is part of a larger conversation of how the park got to where it is today. Um, regarding chemicals, um, we do currently, uh, spray the park right now for, uh, for weeds. We sprayed it this spring. Uh, prior to spraying, we did reach out to, uh, Varn and some, and other park neighbors and we did not receive any, any, uh, complaints against spraying for the park. And in terms of maintenance, I think that's something that we can, we can discuss when it comes to, um, turf maintenance, to help minimize chemicals and to use, um, and, and to use best practices.
Does Five Valleys Audubon have any position relative to use of chemicals, um, and impacts on bird habitat? Do you want to come to the mic, uh, if you could, please? Not, sorry to put you on the spot, but.
I don't think we have any stance on that or I'm certainly not aware of, um, you know, I just would say that when they apply the pesticides or herbicides, that they probably shouldn't be doing it maybe in, uh, nesting season, but, um, it probably can't be avoided. It's kind of a six of this, half of a dozen, half a dozen of the other, right? Because, um, the noxious weeds are every bit as a problem as pesticides are for birds, I would say. So no, I'd say the chapter has no policy about herbicide use.
And could you state your name for the record again?
Um, Pootie McLaughlin.
Okay, thank you. I don't want to dominate all these questions. Did, Cole, did you have anything? Uh, Jean, I might have another one or two, but. Okay, let's see what else. Oh, Garrick, your hand's up.
I just want to add, um, a little bit more, uh, regarding the parking, additional site amenities and the, and the, and the proposed dog park. Those are not, um, those were not supported by the neighborhood at the June nineteenth meeting. Uh, those are identified for future phases that are pending community, that are pending future community process and community support and county approval. So we're really only looking at the playground, uh, a half-size basketball court, walking trails and possibly a shade shelter and a multi-turf area, realizing that a turf area is going to be heavily dependent on the availability of water.
So in other words, uh, the dog park would be predicated on additional public process down the road if that.
Correct.
Okay, so that's good to know. Uh, and priority-wise, so, uh, there was some, some concern I heard today that, uh, what we're seeing on the schematic may not be fully representative of the priorities identified in the public process. Could you just, uh, recap that for us?
Yes. Let me back up here. So here's the, uh, priority list that was referenced and, uh, low-impact development, a walking loop trail and the playground are the top three. Uh, um, depending on how you would like to count, the, um, dog park, passive recreation, shade shelter and a buffer zone would be in the top five. So scrolling back to the proposed plan here that had community support and that we're seeking hopeful adoption from the Board of County Commissioners, uh, we are within that top three where we have a playground, uh, um, or a playground, the walking trails with a possible shade shelter and a multi-use turf court. I do realize that the half-size basketball court is outside of that top three, but it is also an existing, it's an existing condition there.
Okay, thank you. And finally, and this could be either for you Garrick or for you John, could you just say a few words in terms of how, uh, how currently with any of our parks, we fund either infrastructure improvements or maintenance of those park facilities? Just as a, an example of how this might unfold in the future?
Sure. John Stegmyer, Missoula County Parks and Trails Open Lands Program. So some of the maintenance that we do just comes out of our, our maintenance budget. Um, you know, uh, things like the herbicide and the mowing, that's just our annual allotted maintenance budget. Um, things, other sources of funding that we have available from community-driven interest are, are Parks and Trails Matching Grant Program. And that would look like in such a situation if, uh, the neighborhood said, you know, we really want to accomplish a certain initiative. Um, we have fifty thousand dollars available annually for, um, community-initiated park maintenance projects or capital projects as well. I guess is that maybe what you're looking Garrick? Do you, is there other things?
Yeah, and also I, I think there, there's precedent for, um, community partners, uh, to play an active role, whether it's thinking of East Missoula or out in West Riverside where, uh, outside groups, be it the Lions Club or, or whatever, um, plays an active role in helping manage that site.
Yeah, I think that is a, a really great point that our, um, our program does function really well on many particular parks because of the strength of our partner group. And I, I think to your point that, that is true, our, our, our best run and our, um, highest functioning park sites are the way they are because of our strong partnerships with either the neighborhood group or, um, an organized community group such as a Lions Club or, um, community advocacy nonprofit. So that, that is a great point. And that's, there's not to say that, um, such an organization couldn't develop around this particular park, a friends group or the like, to advocate and to organize work for the park and development of the park.
Okay, and I guess, uh, last but not least, and I, I know this might not, uh, resonate with everyone, but there is a precedent for, um, if, um, a certain area of the community so desires to have a special improvement district, uh, and essentially tax themselves to, uh, pay for maintenance of a park facility. But that's something down the road that would need to be contemplated in a different process. Thanks, John. Okay, any discussion, I guess, or a motion?
I'd just like to, um, thank the park board and the, um, staff for, uh, very, being proactive in this way and, and carrying out a very transparent process. Um, folks spoke about what a welcoming, um, process it was and how folks were, all felt like they were heard. It is, uh, I think it has been community-driven. It's, um, anytime you have a park that's been, that you have a plan for, then you can go forward, but also it, it just, um, is going to be used if it feels like it's safe and not looking like it's abandoned. I think that neighborhood pride will come out. Most of the park, the, what we'd be adopting today is, is pretty passive, um, other than the playground and, and I guess you can passively walk or actively walk, whichever you're doing. You can meander, you can walk fast. Uh, I, I see this as a, an area of our, um, of the urban area here, kind of the urban core, the fringe that's park deficient and as we saw in the, in the pictures there. And, um, you know, as you walk along the trail along Mullen, uh, and your kids are whining because they are tired of walking, as soon as you send them over toward a playground, they're going to play like crazy and then, um, walk home. But, um, I see it as a great thing and it, it's designed to be safe, um, it improves the quality of life, it'll be an asset to your whole neighborhood. And it addresses the issues that were brought to our attention early, which is the deferred maintenance, um, illegal dumping encroachments. It hadn't been mowed, it felt like it was a neglected, um, nobody realized that it was a, a community asset going by. They probably thought it was just some farmer's field that hadn't been addressed. So I, uh, support this. I, um, I think the one thing that we could add to the narrative is the one thing that was brought up is, um, as we do plantings in the future, to consider native shrubs somewhere, uh, for the birds, um, and the rabbits or whatever. But other than that, I, I definitely support adopting this plan today.
Thank you. Cole, anything you want to say?
Yeah, I appreciate the hard work that staff did. It, it was a very thorough process. The, obviously there is quite a bit of dissension to, um, from people who unfortunately did not attend the extensive process and that's always unfortunate, um, when you can't hear the fifty people that signed the petition, what is it that they don't like and have a little bit more input to see, you know, what, what the problem is. Um, but I think the end result, to me, appears to be a relatively non-threatening framework of a very natural park, um, that meets the goals of the community. Um, and when it was stated that, you know, why did you pick to put a park here? We didn't pick to put a park here. The community came to the county and said, "We want to do something with this." And so it was really a community-driven effort. And really, we, we plan in order to, I love how Martha said, you know, so that we can capitalize on outside funding and partnership opportunities. And I think it's really important that people keep that in mind because, um, everyone's right. We clearly don't maintain the parks that we have. If we make them better, do you think we're going to spend more to maintain them better? It's not going to happen unless we raise taxes and do that. And so it is important for the community to discuss that as you look at phasing this in and what you want to do with it, knowing that frankly, there isn't more county money to maintain this than there is now and we're already doing a bad job of it. So that's one of my problems with planning is it sets up false expectations. It also sets up in ten years, if nothing has been done on this, new residents move in and they come to the county and they say, "Hey, county, you passed this plan, now implement it." And it was never the intent for the county to have the money to necessarily implement these plans. We do the planning so that people have something on the ground and the framework set in place so that they can actually successfully pursue other funding. And maintenance is always going to continue to be an issue and I, I do have those concerns and I hear what, what the dissension is saying. I also live out in the county and, and I, and I hear people not wanting to develop parks near where they live and people coming and, and things like that. I hear those concerns, so. Um, but I do think that in the end, this was a good compromise situation that seems like it reflects people's values in the area.
Thank you. Yeah, likewise, I want to give thanks to, uh, staff, uh, the Parks and Trails Advisory Board and all the members of the public who participated in, uh, the process to vision what this park might look like in the future. I really do appreciate the responsiveness, uh, in, um, in the planning process to citizen concerns because we've seen an evolution of the, the, uh, the schematic, uh, over time. And I think it's, it's critically important to note that what folks are seeing on the screen here by way of the kind of purple-colored text, and I think some of those items are, are the main sticking points that some folks brought up today are not a, a done deal and that is going to involve additional public input. And if there is no future public support for a dog park, it's, it's not going to happen. So I, I think that's another aspect of being responsive to, uh, uh, what the public has, has stated. And like Commissioner Rowley said, this is a framework. Um, uh, it's good to have this in place. I, I've seen this in other contexts back when the, uh, recovery and re- federal Recovery and Reinvestment Act, uh, was passed by Congress, uh, uh, on the heels of the, or during the midst of the recession, um, a decade ago, there were projects that got funded because there was a framework or a plan in place. The projects didn't, that did not have a, a framework or plan in place, did not receive the funding and are not seen on the ground today. And finally, yeah, absolutely, there is no, there is no free ride. Um, and, uh, and maintenance and implementing projects, um, on the ground does cost money, but one way to mitigate that is through volunteerism. Uh, I think volunteerism is alive and well in Missoula County, uh, by way of some of what John mentioned with some of the partnerships that we've struck up. Um, so county resources are going to go part of the way, but, uh, we're still going to rely on, on, uh, all of us collectively as Missoula County to accomplish things. So anyway, um, with that, uh, would anyone like to make a motion?
I would move that the board adopts the New Meadows Park Master Plan and Narrative, providing certainty for park neighbors, area residents and park advocates as to the vision and management for the park. Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the plan and narrative is adopted. Thanks, everyone, for coming out and, uh, for all of your input along the way. Is there any other business to come before the commission today? Seeing none, will be adjourned. Thank you.